Good evening, welcome to the December meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. Please help me open the meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call and recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Angelina Lawson, Paul Snyder, Dick Carter, and Roberta Everslaj.
Thank you, Angelina and Paul, thank you for coming back again before you take your duties in January. The next item on the agenda is our open forum session, the open forum section of the board agenda is an opportunity for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum session at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are allotted five minutes unless there are a large number of speakers, in which case the chair has the discretion to allow a shorter period of time. In order to be recognized, a speaker needs to file and register in advance of the open forum session. When addressing the board, registered speakers are expected to remain at the podium, be respectful, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a general rule, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues, matters that are being addressed through our established grievance processes, or are otherwise a subject of review by the college or the Board of Trustees. If one speaker tonight, Chris Russell is back tonight. Chris, please come to the podium.
Chris.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. President, members of the administration, teachers, other members of the administration, and community members. My name's Chris Rozell, I've been a student here for six semesters. I addressed the board some last month, and I'm going to continue where I left off, which was around quality teaching. I looked at the rating of the college on the internet, and it said that we were 72nd in the nation among community colleges, and it said that our teaching quality was a C. Now, I think maybe it was a C+. But, I've had excellent teachers here. I've had some of the best teachers that I've ever had here. And I've been to many, many universities and many colleges, and some of them are in the top five in the country. So, having some of the best teachers here says something. At the same time, I've had teachers here who taught with their back to me, and they covered up what they wrote as they wrote it, so that once they moved on down the board, I could find out what they had written. That's not excellent teaching quality. We can do better. All we have to do is standardize the best practices we have at the college. Some of my teachers sit there and write, and it's projected up on the screens, they're facing me, they're talking to me, and it's immediately visible, and at the end of the class, they send us all a copy of the notes. And I say, fantastic, that's lovely, great teaching method. So, those are a couple of little suggestions as to how we can improve our teaching quality. Another is with our civic participation. And I've talked to the board a number of times, and you all have done pretty much everything I've suggested, and we are among the leading colleges in Kansas in our civic participation. In 2016, 51% of our students voted, maybe it was 51.6%, and that's, that's pretty good, 51.6 of eligible students. You got a pop from students like me, we have 3% of the student body, and 80% of us vote in all elections. So, it was the younger students who had less participation. Some colleges get higher participation by putting a spot where you sign up for classes to click and register to vote and get an advanced ballot. A ballot by mail helps students because the student doesn't have to leave classes, they may have tests during election time, they may have a busy schedule, and besides that, I've had some students that I've studied with who were taking 18 semester hours, that's six courses, at two different colleges, one of them being JCC, working a full-time, 40-hour-a-week job at CERNAs as a professional, and working another half-time job for 20 hours, and they don't have time to go away to a polling spot when you're taking 60, working 60 hours and taking 40 hours, or 18 semester hours of classes. I wouldn't let my children take more than 15 hours of classes, and I wouldn't expect them to work along with doing it. But we have students who work extremely hard, and who have to study very hard. So these are just a couple of things. Another is if we reminded everyone when election season is. If we used our many facilities to put up on our LED screens and send out on info lists to all the employees, it's election day, voting has begun, we'd have greater turnout. And we're doing good, but we can do better. The rest of the state, the general population, 58% voted, and that's down from previous years due to reasons I won't discuss. But, we can, we should, for an educated population, be moving above the state level, not tagging below it. So those are just a couple of suggestions, and I'll stop there and continue next meeting. Thank you very much.
Chris, I think you practiced because you're right at five minutes, so, very good. Thank you for your ideas. I know we've, I know we've improved our process on trying to make sure voter registration is known to students, and it would be good if every, more people registered in society and more people voted, so, thank you.
The college has a lot to contribute to the community, and our informed opinion is one of those things, so thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next item is awards and recognition, a data quality award for Vicki Johnson, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Musil. I'd like to turn this over to Karen Martley, Vice President of Continuing Ed and Organizational Development.
Vicki, if you wouldn't mind going up to the podium. I would like to introduce Vicki Johnson. Vicki Johnson is a data specialist in our Johnson County Adult Education Program, and she's worked at the college close to 10 years in her role, and we work with you on all kinds of things all the time. But this past October, at the meeting of the Adult Education Programs, Dr. Blake Flanders, excuse me, presented the Excellence in Adult Education reporting to Johnson County Adult Education, which just really underscores the importance of the data that you collect. If you're not aware of it, in the Adult Education Programs, they are funded based on their performance. So they not only collect lots of information on the students, but also on their performance as they progress through those programs. So Vicki has been great about doing that, and also not only pulling that together, but checking it for accuracy along the way, and has become known as an expert across the state. Many of the programs reach out to her and ask for advice when they make changes to the program, or help with training, or problems they're having. But in addition, Kbor often will reach out to Vicki as well when they're making changes, and ask her advice about how that would work as well, too. So Vicki, we're really proud of the work that you do, and how you help our students, and the accuracy of that information, which only allows us to keep our program growing and doing great work here in the community. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Vicki declined the opportunity to make comments. I'll just comment that our daughters played soccer together, they were both defense men, defense people. They were both rather temperamental and volatile, and Vicki showed a little bit of that on the sideline. All right, our Student Senate report, Student Senate President, Mr. Rowe, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm the Student Senate President, Alex Rowe, and today marks the second time that I will be able to express my gratitude to the board and the administration as a whole for allowing me with the opportunity to update you all with the activities recently undertaken by our student government here on campus. Throughout this semester, our Student Senate's Budget Committee has appropriated funding for five student clubs and organizations totaling approximately $17,000 allotted for conference travel, event hosting, and initiatives that support industry and career experience. Student club events such as these, in addition to providing a much-needed outside-the-classroom respite, also provide genuine long-term benefit to the students who participate, who are thereby able to secure career experience and connections in their respective fields. The Student Senate has also approved the formation of our campus's 87th and 88th Student Club/Organization, the first being the Magic the Gathering Club, and then the second is 35+ Club. As the name implies, the Magic the Gathering Club is a club that encourages students to engage with one another by playing the trading card game, Magic the Gathering. 35+ Club is focused around non-traditional students and their interests. And I'd also just like to quickly highlight the efforts of our Academic Excellence Challenge Team. This is a student organization that participates in trivia-like tournaments all across the nation, and I'm proud to announce that they finished in first place out of 10 at this year's Snow Bowl Tournament, which consisted of eight rounds of competition, so we're all very impressed by that. The Student Senate has just finished our annual JCCC Gives charity. You'll remember that this gives students, faculty, and staff the opportunity to provide gifts and funds for members of our JCCC family who are in need this holiday season. This year, we were able to provide holiday gifts for over 60 individuals. The funding of these gifts was made possible by the generous donations of the JCCC community and their support of our fundraising activities, so we're really grateful for that. Last week, the Student Senate sponsored our annual Photos with Santa event. This is a fun and free opportunity for students to commemorate the holiday season by allowing students, faculty, and staff to enjoy refreshments such as hot cocoa or hot cider while taking photos with Santa Claus. This proves to be a nice event to close out the semesters, and is one of a broader series of stress relief events sponsored by the student life as we head into finals week. Finally, on January 9th, the Student Senate will be holding a day-long retreat for, to prepare for the upcoming semester. The day-long retreat provides us with the opportunity to coordinate strategic planning, team building, and to hear concerns and ideas from our full Senate membership. We look forward to receiving the assistance of Keith Davenport and Cassie Folk, who will be acting as our co-advisors. I again thank the board for listening to this update regarding Student Senate, and I wish you all a happy holiday season.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions? When was your last final?
It was today, actually.
Best stress release?
Uh-huh. Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you. You weren't able to be here last month, and I think we neglected to hit up the Board of Trustees for JCCC Gives, so if there's still an opportunity to, to collect funds, I think there's probably some members of the board that would like to contribute to that, so...
Oh, fantastic, yeah. If you'd like to do that, I'd encourage you to contact Keith Davenport. As I say, he's acting as our co-advisor.
Okay.
Alex, isn't there a late premium, or a premium for late contributions?
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
Kind of a penalty for late contributions.
Oh, no, 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 sir.
Terry, if you could give us that contact information, how we do that, I would really appreciate it.
Send that out, please. We'd love to help. Thank you very much, enjoy your holiday break.
Thank you very much, sir.
Student, or college, student lobbyist report, college lobbyist report. Mr. Carter, what's going on in Topeka?
Well, it's another banner month in Topeka. We are up 8.35 million over projected revenues, and that is up from the revised numbers that the consensus revenue estimating group adjusted upward in November. And so again, it's good news. It's, it's five months of good news, and, and we need to, to look at it as so. But I will also caution that, that those very close to the budgeting process are still concerned that we're not, not out of the woods yet, even though we're seeing increased revenues coming into the state's coffers. The primary increased amount is coming from the individual income tax dollars that are flowing into the accounts, and again, that's a direct result of the tax policy change at the end of the legislative session, and I think there's still some unknowns that are related to, to that policy change in and of itself that we won't realize until April of 2018. So we'll, we'll continue to, to watch as the revenues come into the state's coffers, but again, not out of the woods just yet. Late in November, I followed up with the folks in the Pensions and Investment and Benefits Committee. They received a lot of reports from the folks that run CAPERS, took a little look at some of the changes that have been made over the past year or so, and it's probably not a surprise, especially if you have any type of, if you're following the markets on any level, that the returns are very good right now. And for the past 11 months, CAPERS has seen positive returns, specifically as it relates to, you'll recall about two years ago, there was a $1.5 billion sale of bonds to help cover the unfunded gap in, in CAPERS, and not only have, as of September 30, did the returns surpass the interest rate, they, they've been doing very well. And so, the state, the state is in a position where, where they're making money. Hopefully that will continue to move forward. I would say that the folks in charge of those investment portfolios were urging caution because there are a number of factors that are beyond their control, such as international politics, and you see that every day in the, in the news, as well as the Fed just increased the interest rate, I believe, this week, another quarter. And so, again, all of those factors play into the returns, but we are watching very closely what goes on with, with CAPERS, the unfunded liability, and changes that are related to working after retirement. That's very important to, to many folks on our campus. The Special Committee on the School Finance Decision, again, I, I have to chuckle at the name of the committee, and probably will need to write that down so I can preserve it moving forward, just because it's an interesting name for a committee, and, and one that we've not really seen that addresses the issues before. But that committee met on December 4th, received again, a lot of information related to where we are with the school finance decision, how we got to where we are, and they've not made any recommendations yet. But I think what, what we're beginning to see is the conversation, not only from those committee members, but, but people close to school finance are talking about just exactly what the legislature did in 2017, and perhaps the, they did not do a good job of justifying, the state's attorneys did not do a good job of justifying the changes that were made in 2017. And so I think you're going to see that as a key component of the response to the, to the court in April. I think you're also going to see one of the things that we've seen, and though it didn't come to us directly, we've, we've received a copy of it, there's been a request as a result of conversation from that committee on what reductions in budgets would look like across state agencies. Again, we're not a state agency, but we receive a portion of our funding through the block grant at the Board of Regents, and, and so we'll have to continue monitoring that. I mean, we, earlier in, in the fall, I was telling you about the, the board's number one priority, and that is to restore the 4% cuts made in fiscal year 2017. Now we're looking at budget requests, asking where would cuts come from if they had to be made to the tune of approximately $600 million. I don't think that's going to happen, but it's not something we should overlook either. We need to pay attention to that, and I think that Dr. Flanders will be making a report later on when the School Finance Committee meets later on in December, towards the end of December, and they may meet again the first of the year before the legislature convenes on January 8th. They still have a couple meetings left on their, on their permission list, if you will. But it is in fact what everybody that we've been meeting with from a legislative viewpoint is talking about. This will be the driver for the session. That's, again, unfortunate because we're on the, on the corrected path to, to getting budgets where they need to be, restoring programs to where they need to be, and, and we're going to spend some time, at least the first part of the session, dealing with, with the school finance issue. For all practical purposes, the legislature will need to have their plan into, at least to the governor for signature by around the first of April, just because of the way the timeline is working for responding to, to the court. So hopefully that will help keep things moving forward, but I'm sure we'll wait till the very last minute of whatever the deadline is before we send a bill to the governor, to the governor's direction. We've continued our legislative breakfast and lunch events at the college. They continue to provide good dialogue. We've had 13 legislators so far for, for this, this round of the Johnson County delegation, and each one has its own flavor and its own tone, and, and really, those of you that, that have been able to participate can, can see the, the different conversations that occur, not always about legislative items, again, but it gives us a sense as to where things are going, where they're coming from in their opinions, and I, and I think we have a good group of, of folks representing Johnson County that, that are very supportive of the college, and I, and I'm not telling you anything you probably don't already know. Higher Education Day planning continues. We will have a robust presence on January 18th. That also happens to be a Board of Regents Day, and so there will be board members there. It's also a trustee day here, but we'll have Jean-Claude over there, as well as a number of things promoting the college, and we'll have a strong presence in the Capitol on the 18th, if you find your way over there. And then finally, this is something that, that kind of continually comes up in conversation, you know, because of the college and who, the, the presence that it has and where it's situated in the county, it just automatically serves as a convener, not to be confused with the actual convener that is going to be held on the college campus on, on January 4th. And I think that that's another great opportunity for us to be able to have conversations with folks, and so we will be once again host to that for the second time on January 4th, where the delegation gets its formal send-off from, from folks. And then finally, the Government Affairs Task Force will meet before the, the session convenes to look at what legislation is, is being held over from last year, as well as kind of take a guess as to where, where things might be going as we move into 2018. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I would stop there, and if there's any questions, do my best to, to answer them.
You said finally twice.
Finally.
Yeah, I think, just my, my only point. Trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Carter, you mentioned 8.35 million overestimated on the budget.
Yes, sir.
How does that compare to last year's revenue at the same time?
I didn't bring the specific numbers up here, but percentage-wise, it's fairly significant compared to last year's, they measure them in different categories, but the individual income tax is up almost, I think it was 34% over the same period last year. Sales tax is relatively flat.
Okay. Trustee Ingram?
And as that relates to the policy that you were talking about, the tax policy earlier, you're talking about the LLC.
The pass-through, the changes to the pass-through income tax for, for LLCs and S Corps, there were a number of other changes as well, but I think where we're seeing a majority of that, there, there were changes to the individual rates, too.
Right.
And so for employers who, who are, are collecting that and turning it in on behalf of the employer, there's, there's that as well. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit more broad-reaching than just the LLCs, but yes, that is, that is a significant piece.
And regarding CAPERS, when that money was borrowed, it was to be returned with 8% interest, is that correct?
I think that was their target goal.
Okay, and when was that money to begin to be returned? Is that 2017 or 2018?
Well, they're seeing returns on the investments and paid back the bonds, but the state has, the state starts paying back in fiscal year 2017 is correct.
Okay.
And so we're now past the point where we're, we're still paying more than just the interest.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying.
We're earning more than the interest, I should say.
Right, and you did mention that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Sobchak?
Could you please describe what a robust demonstration table in the Capitol looks like?
I can. We will have lots of trinkets and swag to hand out to legislative staffers. We are, the Finger will be there, we will have the Finger there. Jean-Claude will be there for photo opportunities. We have a couple of banners and flags that will be flying, so...
The Finger is the safe finger, which is a patented device on behalf of the college. It allows people to do blood tests and practice that, so, so everybody's clear on that. Trustee Cross?
Yes, last week, we had a breakfast with some legislators, and you were there, and I know Dr. Sobchak has talked extensively about it, and it's a big deal in my mind, but my state representative, Stephanie Clayton, was somewhat fuzzy on the importance of service boundaries, and I think perhaps the knowing or unknowing erosion of those boundaries. So, is this an item that's specific to, like, the education committees, or does the body as a whole ever get? With all due respect, the body didn't seem to understand that specific of an issue, and I think it's, it's a pretty big issue in community college world.
Yeah, it's, it would certainly be discussed in the education committees. I suppose you could find it being discussed in the education budget committees even, but typically that's, that's more financial than policy-related. The, the, the service areas are a conversation that are not commonly held in Topeka. They've been around since the 60s, and there are a couple of different maps, depending on who you, who you talk to, or which map you look at. And so I think that, again, it's one of those things that is our job, meaning my job, to educate our delegation.
That's to be critical of you, maybe, but it's not directed at you. I'm certainly asking, because I, I know Linda Fun speaks highly of you, and a number of people speak highly of you. I guess what I'm asking is, in our job, walking around the community, or in the interminable meetings we have, we should be talking more about the, as we get new and younger legislators perhaps come in, we need to be talking to them about...
It's a very complex issue, I think.
Right. Is it fair to say?
It's a, it's a very good point, but the issue is not on any specific agenda. We're always aware that it could suddenly appear, and you know how sometimes in Topeka things can emerge very quickly and get traction, but the service area is something that has been discussed by, by the community colleges, but is, and we have opposed any progression of that issue. And it's not just each college's service areas, it's also, for example, what happens with the university service areas, of which they are in control. So KU is Douglas County, and, and that would be kind of a bonanza for whatever schools can, can get in there. So it's, it's an ongoing issue, but in today's world of, of competing for enrollment, these service areas are becoming more and more important.
And I don't mean to belabor the point, I'm just working here ahead of the legislative session. I think it's key and critical that we beat this over the head, because to make sure we have service boundaries, it's your language. It's a slippery slope in which we begin to devolve into this statewide system, then they implement a statewide mill levy on us, right, on Johnson County.
Yeah, if you were to eliminate the service areas, and let's say you had, you know, five community colleges...
Which are geographic boundaries.
Right.
Right, so...
And, and you had five community colleges here, and pretty soon there's, and we could be all over the state, then that pretty much makes the argument that, you know, community colleges don't just represent their own counties, they represent the entire state. Therefore, in order, in order to fund that, we need to impose a statewide mill levy, I guess which is what universities do. That imposition of statewide mill levy, that's going to mean Johnson County will be carrying a disproportionate share across the state for that. So it's something that, we always need to be alert, Dick works really hard to make sure we're alerted if anything comes up, but to the credit of KACCt and efforts that have been made, they are not, at least outwardly, going in that direction at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dick.
Sir.
Happy holidays. We'll move on to committee reports. The first item is the Audit Committee, the only thing in your packet, starting at page one, is the minutes of the Audit Committee meeting held on November 9th. The report on that meeting was made last month by, by me as the chair. The next item is Collegial Steering. We met at Collegial Steering the first Tuesday this month. We had a, a good discussion about a topic for... first Tuesday this month. We had a, a good discussion about a, a topic from way back when on academic freedom and what, what type of academic freedom protections have been historically in higher education, what, what we have done at the college, the need perhaps for a written policy at the college. And we reviewed the American Association, the Association of University Professors nineteen forty statement as interpreted in nineteen seventy. And it was a very good discussion, and I think we'll probably continue that as Dr. McLeod is working to have something as part of our accreditation process. So it was, it was a good meeting. Human Resources, Trustee Ingram?
Yes, Human Resources Committee met on Monday, December the fourth. Becky Sentliver, Vice President of Human Resources, provided an overview of the Human Resources Department and updates on workforce. Strategic initiatives for fiscal year eighteen include the transition of retirement investment plan to one record keeper, faculty salary study, the rollout of leadership training program, HLC credentials audit, and the distribution of employee total compensation statements. Jerry Zimmerman, Manager of Benefits, updated the committee on the current state of the Affordable Care Act provisions as they continue to affect Johnson County Community College. Karen Martley, Vice President, Continuing Ed, Organizational Development, shared an update on strategic priorities for staff development twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. The department will begin implementing or planning for projects to support faculty, staff, and compliance requirements in twenty eighteen. There will be updates on projects throughout the year as they are implemented. Becky Sentliver provided an update on the status of the faculty salary study, and they anticipate having the study completed sometime after the first of the year. Human Resources Committee will meet again on February 5th of twenty eighteen. And that concludes my report.
Questions? If not, thank you. We'll move on to Learning Quality. Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met earlier this month on December 4th. Most trustee Sandate and I were there, along with Dr. McLeod. Professor Barry Bailey gave a sabbatical presentation regarding open scholarly publications. He was granted a sabbatical during the fall of two thousand sixteen to evaluate free, freely available scholarly journals, journals deter, to determine their discoverability in academic collections, determine the need for an easy-to-use and implement hosting framework, and create a tool that could be used by institutions such as ours who are hosting those resources. Barry developed a WordPress plugin, which is a cost-effective, user-friendly, and efficient means to catalog scholarly presentations for JCC compared to the current vendor. It could also be made available to other institutions to use. And he is working toward a May deadline to replace Digital Commons by B-Press with his development. I thought it was a, a good presentation, one that could, in his math, save us about twenty thousand dollars, but he said that it was tricky during an election year to do that, so. Next, we had a press, presentation by Sheila Doneski, who gave a report on the workload committee. Sheila, Sheila and Danny Alexander, Professor of English, gave an update on the efforts of the workload committee to objectively evaluate the workload and associated compensation for lab classes. They reported that they are in the middle of the process and continue to explore options for effective evaluations as well as input from other institutions concerning their processes. The effort continues to be a work in progress toward equitable compensation based on a measurable standard. He indicated, excuse me, they indicated, that they currently, that currently there is no recommendation for changing workload standards. Next, Jake Akhurst. I'll switch pages. Program Director for Continuing Education provided an overview of the department's staff and the breadth and depth of the offerings. The department continually evaluates the course offerings based on the input from students, external clients, and employers and tailors programs or classes to a specific group based on needs. Advising students of what courses there may be or may not benefit, they may or may not benefit from, is also an ongoing reciprocal arrangement with credit instructions. James Hopper, Professor of Web Development, Digital Media, and Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, presented several curriculum modifications to the committee effective academic year two thousand eighteen and nineteen, and that can be found in your board packet. I will ask Dr. McLeod, maybe I misread, did environmental psychology survive the cut? Or was it because I said something, or?
No.
Okay. I was looking for it, and I was heartened that it survived and advanced, at any rate. Dr. Gurb Singh, Associate Vice President of Academic Affairs, reported on the renewal of the affiliation agreement with the Johnson County Library, which extends by three years the current terms of the facility use agreement for the provision of adult education at the Antioch Library at no charge to the college. It was moved forward for board approval. Complete details can be found subsequently in the Consent Agenda portion of the two thousand fifteen board packet. And a prelimi, oh no, excuse me, that's, that's management, sorry. Mr. Chair, after almost five years, thanks to the great Legislature of Kansas, I, I am no longer on the Learning Quality Committee, and that concludes my final.
Not yet.
No, that's my last report.
I got a vote on the nominee, Mitch White. You're not, you may have just bought yourself another year.
Too soon. It's a revenue enhancement.
Yeah. Management Committee, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Management Committee met at eight AM on Wednesday, December 6th, here in the boardroom. The information of that meeting can found, be found on pages nine through thirty-one of your board packet. Barbara Larson, Executive Vice President of Finance and Administrative Services, presented information on the facility use agreement that is found on page eighty-one of the Consent Agenda, and it's an agreement with adult education with the Johnson County Library. Rachel Leers, Associate Vice President of Financial Services, reported that the two thousand seventeen tax levy rates have been published by the County Clerk's Office. You've seen them publicly published. The college's final two thousand seven tax, two thousand seventeen tax levy rate for the general fund is eight point nine six six. Capital Outlay Fund is point five oh three, and Special Assessment Fund is point zero three four, for a total tax levy of nine point five oh three. Total valuation is approximately nine point eight billion dollars. The proposed fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen calendar and budget guidelines were also presented, and we'll address those momentarily. Mitch Borchers, Associate Vice President of Business, provided an informative presentation on our auxiliary services. Before we get to the dining services, which is a major part of it, I, I really want to compliment Mitch and the entire staff within auxiliary services. I think our goal each year is to do the best we can for expenses, for revenue to match expenses. That doesn't always occur. But we're always looking at strategies and actions to, to make sure that our expenses are within limits. Dining services is a major portion of our auxiliary services, and we continue to review strategies on food security and staff and utilization. So it's, it's always a, it's a tough, it's a tough task to achieve. Mitch introduced Jason Arnett and Claudia Martin Hoade, who, I wish all of you could have heard this report. I can't speak for Lee and David, who are, Trustee Cross and Trustee Lindstrom are also on the Management Committee. But they gave us an extensive report about the challenge that too many of our students have with food insecurity. And they have put in place a, a program, and I want to thank Kate Allen and the Foundation Committee, who have stepped up to help develop a fund for these students. And it's actually a, a card, credit card process, where students can go through the, the food services and, and secure food for the day. It's, it's something that I think I shared with you a year ago, was a concern at ACCT. I had a chance to speak in front of the Kansas Board of Regents about student wellness, and while they didn't expect, I think, me to talk about food and lodging and mental wellness, I did. And so I was really pleased to hear that our college is, is taking such progressive steps to help students who have a challenge with food. And I would like to also thank all of the departments within the college who have stepped forward to help our dining services in this program. And if you would like to know more about that, Mitch and Jason and Claudia will certainly be able to share that with you. But that was a, a highlight for me, Mitch, to hear that report at our management meeting and hear how we're taking care of, of these students. Mitch also presented the sole source report of bids between twenty-five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars. A summary of that report is found on page thirteen of the packet. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facilities Planning, gave a monthly update on the Capitol infrastructure projects. That report is on page twenty-seven. Rex also reviewed a new report, which is on page twenty-eight, and we will be summarizing that report as we go along here, associated with the Master Facilities Project. And this will be a monthly, a monthly report. I guess, Rex, I'll ask you to speak later, when we get to that particular point, on the guaranteed maximum price. But, but before we get there, let me, let me go over some of the other, the other budgets that we dealt with. The first recommendation is for the, or, not budgets, but proposals. The first recommendation is for the guidelines for the development of the college's two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget. You can see that calendar on pages ten through twelve of your packet. There are some things that, that we did have a good discussion about in the management meeting, and you should all be aware of. One of those is that we're recommending that tuition be held at the current rate for the third consecutive year, no increase in tuition. We're also proposing a one-tenth mill rollback of the college's tax levy. We had some discussion about whether that would be the prudent thing to do. I think we're, or, or, or keep it where it is. And again, this is a budget worksheet calendar. As we go through the year, we'll, we'll, I guess, become a more, a little more intelligent in terms of what the current trends are with assessed valuation, et cetera, et cetera. The increase in assessed valuation is projected to be five percent for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. And the other thing you should look at is the enrollment projection. We had considerable discussion about enrollment. We continue to, I think at this time, be pleased that we're relatively flat, but we are concerned about being flat for several years. And I know that several members on the staff, administration, and faculty are very, very concerned about our enrollment and strategies that we can put in place to, to increase that. I think another point to consider, we seem to have this discussion each year when we get to May, I would, I would like you to look at that calendar and, and remind you that we're approving the calendar tonight. A lot of that budget work then begins in January. You'll note that several activities take place between now and May, and then in May, the board will approve a management budget, so that we can begin to load that into the system, and, and purchases can begin to be considered for the fall, and then we'll approve the final budget in August. We, we sometimes have discussion about why are we doing the two things. So look at those months, make sure you understand all the steps we take to get to the adoption of a two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget. And so with that, I would say that it is a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the preliminary guidelines, preliminary guidelines for the development of the college's two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget, and I'll make that motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Trustee Cross?
Yes, we had some discussion in the Management Committee meeting, and I think that, by and large, I understand these guidelines, and I think it's a creative way to govern and fund the college, and not one I'm generally opposed to. I do have some thoughts and reservations. One, with respect to enrollment, it's good for the economy in the whole that our enrollment's down, but certainly is an issue in a county that's growing, or at least consolidating from regional population trends. It, it's somewhat concerning that our enrollment is down as much as it is. I commend the administration for having tuition be stuck, or remain the same here for the last three years, but I think the general public needs to know that that comes at some cost. In my first term here, and perhaps at no fault to the administration, but just pointing out, we've eliminated several sports as a result of the very difficult fiscal decisions we had to make, and the administration had to make, and due to a dramatically decreased, even if held harmless, state aid that we received. But when we freeze tuition and fees in a desperate attempt to fund and meet our budget in the twenty-first century, that comes at some cost. So track has been eliminated, tennis has been eliminated, golf has been eliminated. So if you want less government, you get less stuff, I guess, is, is where I'm at on that. State aid is obviously down. I think we'll have a decent go in this legislature, but I, I know appraisals are up and have been up for some time, but I do think that it is, I'm dubious to cut the mill despite appraisal values being higher, because I think we're coming into a year where we're going to have conservative allies of Kobach or others, Secretary of State Kobach, I think sees a very real path and plausible, probable path to governor. So we're cutting the mill in a time when we're just about, we run the great risk, at any rate, of a new conservative area coming back to Kansas. And that doesn't get me to full-time hires, because we have existing in programs that are growing that run the risk of losing talent or frankly, losing partners that some of our programs have set up. But because we haven't had any new, I can't remember the last year, we had new full-time hires in our faculty or within the administration. I could be corrected. But while on balance, I think that this is a fine budget and no real alarm is to be sounded. I'm nevertheless using my privilege to speak out and express some of my reservations. So with that, I, I haven't made up my mind yet on voting, so I just wanted to comment.
Trustee Lindstrom?
I know I'm gonna vote. The, the, I, I, I want to make, take a moment to commend Dr. Larson and Rachel Leers on the, the construction of this report, the information that's presented, and the detail that goes into it. I, I really commend them on that. Thank you.
I, I would just comment, and I think we're still waiting for the vote on the budget calendar. I would remind us that, again, this is kind of a worksheet document, and we, we have many opportunities between now and August to refine and tweak and, and vote. I would just caution us that many governmental agencies in this county have rolled back levies in relative to the assessed valuation. And we're a county out of, one out of a hundred and five that is blessed with very strong assessed valuation growth. And I think we have to be sensitive to that in light of how many counties belabor the fact that they wish they had a portion of our assessed valuation. So I, Trustee Cross and I have had good discussion about that. I think your points are well-made, Trustee Cross, but I think we have a lot of time between now and, and May and August to develop this, the budget. This is a working calendar, is what it is.
Well, I'll make some comments. These are budget guidelines. We tend to follow them, and we have to give staff some direction, so that they can go back and figure out what they are going to put together for a budget that we will see at a budget workshop in April, and then adopt a management budget in May, and adopt a final budget in August. I am heartened that we have, at least have a guideline to roll the mill levy back. I had argued perhaps for a greater rollback. For the last several years, we have received five, six, seven, eight percent increases in assessed value. When you leave the mill levy the same, that results in significant additional dollars. At the same time, our enrollment is at the level it was at in two thousand four. We have an obligation, I have an obligation as a trustee, to make sure that the tax dollars are spent as efficiently and prioritized appropriately. And I think we try to do that, but I think unless we take hard looks at ourselves, we don't do it as well as we could. So we may be, you're concerned about this as, because it has a one-tenth of a mill decrease, and I'm maybe concerned because I'm not sure it's a, it's a significant enough decrease. Everybody pays those increased taxes. Most of them are paid by, the highest rate is paid by businesses that support us and that we, and that we support. I have always agreed that if there's an increase in assessed value, we, we are entitled to take some of that because we helped create it. We helped create the economic engine. We helped train workers. We helped create workers for people. We do continuing education that gives people the opportunity to better themselves. But that doesn't mean every year we simply have the right to take every dime of increased value from, from assessed valuation unless we can justify it. And I think as a citizen looks at this and looks at enrollment, we would, we would need to be careful about how we justify. to be careful about how we justify that. So, I'm willing to support this, and I will support this going forward, and I'll continue to take a careful look at where we get our money and where we spend it.
If I could.
You may.
First of all, thank you. Barbara, what's the value of the one-tenth of a mill?
$970,000 to the general fund.
So about a million. And what about the 6% increase that we get over the, the valuation?
Well, 1% increase in assessed valuation is $855,000.
Yeah, so another close to a million. So, it, it kind of, even deducting one-tenth of a mill, we're still coming out pretty good because of the increased valuation that's going on throughout the county.
And even in the past years, and I, this is part of what my comments to, to Rachel and Dr. Larson were in regards to, my question has been over the last several budgets, that even when we hold the mill levy flat, there is a slight adjustment, and that slight adjustment from the, from the appraiser has also related, or resulted in approximately more than $750,000 gained to the college over the last 10 years. So there's some significant increase there, too.
And I would like to commend the board for holding where we've been on, on the mill in light of the fact that we recently borrowed $50 million, and we're embarking on a 102-point million dollar building program across campus. That's very much appreciated, and so that's always been our position on this. Regarding enrollment, no one harps on enrollment more than I do, but I do want to make it clear that if you look at our numbers this year, while across the country, John's down 2% to 3% across the country, I think if you go all the way to this, the end of term, and due to winter, we should come in about more or less even versus the year.
About a, down percent.
Down a percent. So we've done a pretty good job of holding it this year, but in regard to Greg's, Trustee Musial's point of view, yeah, enrollment has been reasonably flat over the last 12, 13 years. So that's something that's, that we, we obviously need to, to look at really closely.
And I think the point we tried to make in management meeting was, population of Johnson County is growing exponentially since 2004, and we're soon projected to be a million people. So, our, our feeling is that are we getting our share of Johnson County students, Johnson County citizens, to, to come to this college, and we need to do a better job of that.
And that's a good point. Thank you.
Trustee Cross?
Just respond briefly, and I think maybe it was a slight bit of hyperbole you engaged in. I don't want every dime of assessed valuation.
Well, if you, if you keep the mill levy the same, you get every dime of it, and that's, that was my point. I think it's just important that we have a robust conversation about the budget, and I think, Jerry, you were right in pointing out, we voted on the budget this year, we adopted the official budget on August 17th, I think it was, and on September 26th, the cabinet started working on this year's budget. So when we get to next April or May, and somebody out there says, "What are you doing on the budget?" Well, we've been doing it for months, and Rachel and Dr. Larson and budget administrators all over campus are doing it for months and months, and they can't do it without these guidelines. So, with, there's no further discussion. We have a motion in a second to approve the budget guidelines and the budget calendar. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Pose, no.
No.
One no. Trustee Cross.
The next recommendation is for roof repair. That's found on pages 14 to 16 in your board packet. 14 bidders were notified, five firms responded. This is roof repair for the GEB building and the Hurst Steiner Child Development Center. You can see the result of those, of those bids. In front of you, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bids of $236,671.21 from Alpha Building Corporation, and $36,000 from Delta Innovative Services, Inc., plus an additional $27,267 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $299,938.21 for roof replacements, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the bids for the bid, for roof replacement of the GEB and the childcare center. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose, no.
Next one is for window replacement. Those bids are found on pages 17 to 18. 10 firms were notified, four firms responded, three with a no bid, and one with a bid for Alpha Building Corporation. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $104,221.90 from Alpha Building Corporation, plus an additional $52,000 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $156,221.90 for window replacements, and I'll make that motion.
Been moved and seconded for the bid. Any questions? I think I can't follow up, I can't leave this alone after my budget rant, but Rex, we have, we normally have a contingency of 10%, and here we have a contingency of 50%? Is there, I know there's, I know there's a reason for it. Could you share that?
Yeah, the reason for it is because of all these window replacements, there's some unknown conditions behind them, because when you take out those windows, there could be some questions about the anchoring, how they're anchored into the buildings. So if you had to make those repairs to those anchors, that's why we've created more of a contingency.
And I know if you estimated the bids would be like $175,000, and it came in at $104,000, so that, we'd still be under your, your initial estimate.
Yes.
Okay.
The budget amount.
Any other questions? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next bid is for building, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, rooftop units. Those bids can be found on pages 19 through 20. 16 firms were notified, three firms responded. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $119,328 from U.S. Engineering Company, plus an additional $11,932 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $131,260 for the campus services building, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, rooftop units, and wood shop, exhaust replacement, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the bid to U.S. Engineering. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next bid is for restroom remodel in the Carlson Center, second floor. Those bids can be found on page 21 through 22. 23 firms were notified, five responded. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $185,216 from the Wilson Group, Inc., plus an additional $18,521 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $203,737 for the Carlson Center building, second floor, restrooms remodeled, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded for the bid for restroom remodeling. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next, the bid is for the annual contract for student engagement tracking system. Those bids can be found on page 23 to 24 of your packet. Seven firms were notified, two firms responded. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Engineering, Ingenierica Systems, Inc., for the establishment of an annual contract for student engagement tracking system at a total annual expenditure of $125,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussion about the bid for Ingenierica Systems, Inc.? Trustee Ingram?
I have one question. Is that something that the students will have access to, or does, where does that information, where is it housed?
Yeah, so it's, it's, the student success plan is student has access to that. As they engage in activities within their plan, they'll have access to it. So, most of them will use it on their mobile devices, but they can log onto a computer and use it as well.
Okay, so it's just there for them? Okay.
Yeah, it's their, it's their success plan that they have access to.
Perfect, thank you.
The last recommendation, I'm sorry.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Pose, no. The Ingenierica Systems, Inc. bid passes unanimously.
Thank you, sorry. The last recommendation is to establish guaranteed maximum prices for construction related to the facility's master plan. Work has taken place with college stakeholders over the last nine months to develop architectural and engineering drawings for the new CTE building, the noon fine arts building and design studio, and the Chiller plant expansion. This work has progressed to a level of confidence at the construction document phase that J.E. Dunn Construction is able to establish GMPs, Guaranteed Maximum Price, for the two new buildings in the Chiller plant expansion. Before we get to those recommendations, I've asked Rex to come forward and give a little update on, on the facility's master planning and what, what we can look forward to. Rex Hayes.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. So, this is a very exciting time for me, especially and for the college, in bringing forth these recommendations for the guaranteed maximum price.
We did it for both purposes, Rex. You and the college.
And I'm so happy about that. But just to continue that excitement, I want to show a few renderings of these buildings. What you're looking at now is the career and technical education building. This is the exterior canopy, so if you're walking from the south, once this building is constructed, this is what you will see. Moving on to that same building, career and technical education site, here you see the automotive lab. So this is on the east side of the building, so there's, on the east side, there's a lot of glass to create transparency. So when you look through those windows on the east side, this is the learning environment that you will see. And this, again, is the CTE building, so if you enter from the south, this is the commons area. So, again, just another visualization of what the building will look like from the inside. Next, we move to the fine arts and design studios building, and this is an exterior shot from the north side, and certainly enhanced here, this is, what you see is what we call the scrim, and this is just one possibility of the building to have projection on that scrim. But again, this is the north view.
Rex, is that where our glorious leader, Dr. Sobchak, will deliver his addresses?
I think, oh, if Joe chooses to, he can make that happen.
Thank you, Trustee Cross.
I think it's set up for you.
This is of the same building, and this is the north entry. So, as you walk in from the north, this is what you'll see when the building is completed. And here, this is on the second level of the FAS building. This is the graphic design studio. So, again, these are just some renderings to show some examples of what the buildings will look like. So, again, these are just renderings, but to make this come true, we had to start construction, right? For, so for the career and technical education building, construction will start soon, January of next year, and it's a 13-month project, so it'll be completed in February of 2019. The fine arts and design studio building, construction will commence in February of 2018 and be completed eight months later, in October, that same year. So hopefully, this just brings forward a little excitement. There's been a lot of work that's gone into this process to get to this point, so there's a lot of different milestones that take part in all this, you know, from the original facility master plan, then we got through the programming, the design and development, and now we're here for the GMP recommendation, and I'm really looking forward to hear what that vote is, is.
Thanks, Rex. A couple, a couple, I guess, of comments before I make the recommendations. I think we, the college staff, I know Dr. Sobchak has mentioned this many times, if we're to be a place, if we are to be a place for students to take that next step out of K through 12, then we, we have some work to do with our facilities. We really do believe that that will also support enrollment strategies in these particular areas. These are areas where currently we have students being employed at graduation, or in some cases while they're still in school. And so, we're excited about, we share Rex's enthusiasm about this, this new era for career and tech ed on the campus of Johnson County Community College. Trustee Lindstrom got a little excited, I did as well, when you showed the graphic of the fine arts building image on the wall. That's exactly what we've been talking about on the intersection of, of college and Quavira here, to promote what goes on on this campus, because, again, while we may know what's going on on this campus, within the campus, we have a community that doesn't really have the same idea of what goes on here. So, thank you for listening and putting those, those strategies in place. So you have, we have three recommendations. I'm going to make them all in one motion.
Rex, hang off a minute. May I just ask, Rex, for, just explain to me and everybody, what, what does guaranteed maximum price mean with respect to each of these buildings?
That means, that's the budget that we're guaranteed. These buildings will be constructed for this guaranteed maximum price, and if it comes in below that, any savings comes back to the owner.
But if they're, so, in construction projects where there are change orders, or they find out something different or whatever, they, they can't go above that, have a change order that will increase this price?
No, they can't have a, a change order that increases the price unless it was asked by the owner. So if we ask to, say, add another 5,000 square foot onto one of the buildings, then that would change the price. But as, based on the construction documents, the price is guaranteed at this amount.
And Rex, my understanding, in the school business, on guaranteed maximum price is that if the, if the construction company wants to alter quality for some reason to meet the guaranteed maximum price, that challenge then comes back on us and say, "No, we're not going to accept a lesser quality. We expect to get what we talked about." And so there's, there's a really a benefit to both organizations for the guaranteed maximum price, but it really puts our people on point to make sure we get the quality we expect. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Are there any circumstances, I mean, Trustee Cook is really pretty good at teaching people to watch out, and you're good at this, too. I'm just saying, are there any circumstances under which they can, they can come back to us and ask for more money, right, if they want to change something?
No, only if the owner requests additional scope to the project.
So there's no circumstance in which...
Unless we change the...
The contractor can come back.
It's a guaranteed price. I'm gonna do it for that amount of money. Unless we change the specifications.
Okay.
Rex, how many other buildings have we built using the guaranteed maximum price?
Well, I've been here going on 11 years, and I've constructed one, two, three, three other buildings, and we've always used the GMP construction delivery method.
And how's it gone?
It's gone well. Very well. And like I said, any savings come back to the owner. When we built the OHEC building, that project came in a million dollars less than the GMP, and that money went back to the college.
And when you add all these guaranteed maximum prices up, they're still within our budget, the original budget for the...
That's correct.
And how does that scrim work on that, on that one building?
How does it work?
Yeah.
In what way?
Do they project that from behind?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's from behind. The projection is from behind.
Thank you. Shiny things get our attention, Rex.
Forget the guaranteed maximum price, let's, let's talk about the scrim.
Therefore, therefore, therefore...
Please make a motion for these.
Therefore, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the guaranteed maximum price proposal from J.E. Dunn Construction Company for construction manager at risk services for the career and technical education building, CTE building, construction in the amount of $23,49,369. Mr. Chair, do you want to take them individually, all in one?
Is there any reason, should we take them individually, since they're separate buildings? I'm looking at our general counsel.
You can do it, counsel.
We'll do them all three together.
Okay. The second, the guaranteed maximum price proposal from J.E. Dunn Construction Company for construction manager at risk services for the fine arts and design studios, construction in the amount of $16,456,063. The guaranteed maximum price proposal from J.E. Dunn Construction Company for construction manager at risk services for Chiller plant expansion construction in the amount of $1,850,520, and I'll make these motions.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded to accept the three guaranteed maximum price amounts. Is there any discussion or any questions? Not all in favor, say yes.
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 No. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I would just, just so we clarify, so we all understand, I don't believe we're planning a groundbreaking in January due to the weather. I had talked with Dr. Sobchak about this earlier. We, we may have some people expecting a groundbreaking, but I, but I think due to the weather, we'll forego that and have a ribbon cutting, so I just wanted to bring it up in case any of you thought we should have, go out and dig dirt in the middle of January. dig dirt in the middle of January.
I think it'll be okay. I'm just glad to know Dr. Cook knows what the weather's going to be in January.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you for another long report, a lot of work for the management committee. The next item on the agenda is the nominating committee. It is Mr. Musel, but Trustee Lindstrom and Trustee Ingram were the man, were appointed to the nominating committee. And I think you have a report, including an updated report that was placed at everybody's station. Trustee Lindstrom?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any formal comments. I just want to report on what has transpired since you assigned this to us. Trustee Ingram and I met and discussed this on several occasions. We submitted a, a slate of positions. And the, there was a necessary for a few minor adjustments based on request of individual trustees. And so that's the sheet of paper that you have in front of you, the updated version. And I have had an opportunity to discuss this with our newest trustees. And we have, we think a prudent workload for them as new trustees. And, and that's, that's about, that's about our report.
Should, should we, you want to read through it just so people at least can have an idea of the officers?
Yeah. Next year, our officers, we are recommending for chairman, Trustee Cook; for vice chairman, Trustee Ingram; for treasurer, Trustee Cross; and for secretary, Trustee Lindstrom. The committees are as follows. Management committee will be chaired by Trustee Lindstrom. We are recommending anyway. And Trustee Musel and Trustee Snyder will also serve on that committee. Under human resources, we have Trustee Cross serving as chair and Trustee Lawson serving on that committee as well. On learning quality, we have asked Trustee Lawson to chair that committee with two other trustees, Trustee Snyder and Trustee Muzel, Muzel, serving on that committee as well. That was, that was my Boston accent. Muzel. It's French. And on the audit committee, we have Trustee Cook as chair and Trustee Ingram on there. That's an automatic. They serve on the audit committee and the collegial steering as well. On the foundation, we have Trustee Ingram chairing that committee, or that liaison, and Trustee Snyder. And then on KACC, we have Trustee Cook. And on JSERT, we have Trustee Lindstrom. And it would be the recommendation of the nominating committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2018 Slate of Officers Committee and Liaison Assignments. And I would make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or discussion?
Before we take the vote, Mr. Chairman, I would ask if Trustee Ingram has anything. I apologize for not...
No, no, you did a great job.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor of the slate as proposed, say yes.
Yes.
opposed no? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report. Trustee Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board packet contains the treasurer's report for the month ended October 31, 2017. Some items of note include, page one of the treasurer's report is the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. October was the fourth month of the college's 2017-2018 fiscal year. An ad valorem tax distribution of $1,169,110 was received from Johnson County during October and distributed as follows. $1.1 million to the general fund, $61,861 to the capital outlay fund. The special assessment fund received $4,199 for a total of $1,169,110. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of October 31, 2017, in all funds, was $91.5 million, which is approximately $14.6 million higher than at the same time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds were within the approved budgetary limits. And it is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the college administration that the college Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended October 31, 2017, subject to audit.
Second.
Moved in second to accept the treasurer's report, subject to audit. Any questions or discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed no? Motion carries unanimously. President's report, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Musel. And seeing that this is the last board meeting of the calendar year, I thought it would be appropriate to wrap things up with a little lightning round. So we're going to get started here with, with Dr. McLeod. Mickey?
Well, we've had a lot of activity over the fall. A great number of things have gone down, but I wanted to highlight kind of three things in particular that I think will, will be of interest because they kind of broadly cover some things. Firstly, we were invited to speak at Peaslee Technical Center in Lawrence to rededicate the new auto lab over there, which we had a hand in building. We were invited to sit on the committee for the hiring of the instructors so that they hired a college-qualified instructor who would be able to work with us to offer the first two classes of our automotive program at Peaslee to the high school students, allowing them to transfer in with those credits directly into our program. The second, as a result of Dr. Sobchak's fine work presenting on the facility's master plan at the Aletha Chamber, they invited me back to speak with a series of hiring professionals in the area, the result of which is that one of those hiring professionals, Phoenix Graphics Printing, which is a multimillion-dollar company based here in Aletha that does production graphics for water bottles and companies that, that brand those products, is looking to employ some of our students through professional internship to come over and work with them in their company. So we really are making some great community connections. And then on the art side, we actually have just found out today that our students have secured a space to perform during the Kennedy Center American College Theater Festival. We have had the honor once before, have earned it again, and our students are looking forward to being able to compete. They choose seven, from a seven-state region, four performing arts troupes, university and college, and our community college has been one that is selected to perform. So that, that has been a, a good capper to a very long semester, seeing that success. And I will say, moving forward, we continue to see great things because as you saw in the presentation, as we build these buildings, we're going to do great things for these students. And while Rex won't say it, I will say it, only in Johnson County can automotive students expect to work on Ferraris.
There are no minivans in the picture. Big, big gap there.
Thanks, Mickey. Dr. Weber?
Okay, yeah. Well, we don't script these, and so I was prepared to give you an update on the JCCC Gibbs campaign, but our student already did a terrific job of that, so I'm going to wing it a little bit. And talk to you a little bit about some information I got when I got that information. And I just want to emphasize the impact of our ambassador program. We often look at our ambassadors, and we have them for admissions to recruitment, student activities to get student engagement, and then, and student, our Center for Student Involvement to try to get peers involved in clubs and organizations. And while they're here and they're employed, it's really important for them to engage their peers and prospective students and talk about the importance of coming to Johnson County and being engaged. However, that ambassadorship doesn't necessarily end with their graduation or departure from the college. Just this week, we had two ambassadors come back to campus and visit and talk about the opportunity they've had to, and they haven't been ambassadors for 10-plus years, talk about how their impact and the impact of the college on, on their overall educational experiences helped them be positive contributors to society. And they are very well-respected in their roles, and so we thought, what, how true is it that they aren't just ambassadors while they're here, but they're ambassadors, hopefully, lifelong to our college? So thank you for your support to that program.
Thank you, Randy. Karen?
I just wanted to remind everyone, we're wrapping up our schedules for Professional Development Days, which will be in January. You've probably all seen that link, so we want to make sure that you all know you're invited to attend all of those sessions. We look forward to seeing you there. We've really tried to narrow down this, this term on, into seven tracks with a lot of focus on our priorities here at the college around Canvas, technology, teaching and learning, student success, employee success, wellness, and safety and security. So that calendar is out there on the site, and we're really looking forward to kicking that off on January the 9th this year.
Thank you, Karen. If you have a chance, please review this, 33 pages this month. The amazing thing when you read through this is that so much of this is done outside of the normal responsibilities here on campus. It really reflects a tremendous commitment by everyone here across campus. I'd like to thank the trustees for this past year. It's been, it's been a pretty good, it's been a really good year. And if you look at some of the progress we've made and heard about some of these things tonight, it's a credit to the administration, to everyone who, our faculty, our staff, everyone who works on this campus to make, make these things happen, but also to the leadership that we experience at this level. Earlier tonight, someone said some things about our instruction in the classroom. The fact is, it's, we actually do an incredible job in the classroom. It's one of the things that when you're out in public, you hear about it all the time. I want to share with you a letter. It's a brief letter from a student in this, in this regard. This is to one of our professors, Gretchen Thum. It was forwarded to me by Dean Laurie Reynolds. And the student, and I will not mention his name, starts out and goes, hello, Professor Thum. I'm sorry you had your back turned to me yesterday in class. No. Sorry, no, I misread that. Did anybody get that at all? Hello, Professor Thum. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you. At the start of the semester, I was worried about taking an online class, as it definitely requires some discipline, and I was concerned about receiving any sort of detailed feedback. Somehow, you hit the jackpot, finding a way to make your online course enjoyable and something to look forward to, as well as giving fantastic feedback with constructive criticism. You're a wonderful educator, and I'm lucky to have been one of your students. All the best. Hats off to Gretchen Thum and to everyone who, who supports her in being able to do such a terrific job in the classroom, as well as to all of our faculty and staff as well. So thank you very much.
Questions for Dr. Sobchak? We have no old business. There is an item listed on new business. It's a recommendation to update and revise the Board of Trustee Policies and Operating Procedures, Series 100. We've had some feedback tonight from several of you that have suggested some corrections that might help make them more readable. And so this is my fault because Tanya had these to me probably seven or eight months ago, and they were supposed to be done on my watch, and they're not going to get done because I think we're going to defer those to January. If you have comments about specific provisions in there, including Paul or Angelina, please get those to Tanya so we can see if there are other changes that could be made. They clearly needed to be updated, and I think that, I think Tanya and her office did a great job on it, and we'll polish those and hopefully adopt the revisions in January.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
One of those things, like in undergrad, I think we did in law school, at the end of the semester, you got the reviews, right, in the class?
Yeah.
Do we get a chair review? We'll put that in our confidential trustee chair review.
Yeah. You're out of order, Trustee Cross. Reports from Board Liaison, Faculty Association. Dennis, get up here and save us. Thank you for being here. I know you've been grading finals.
Giving finals and grading finals, yeah. So thank you, as always, for the chance to address the board and administration. Yeah, this is a busy time of year for faculty as well as students. The students find out how well they did pretty soon. This is kind of the week where we find out how we did. We start grading the finals and see whether they're what we were hoping and expecting. I think for the most part, we tend to be pretty satisfied in the end. We did have an FA meeting earlier this month. It was, for the most part, uneventful till the very end, when a rather delicate subject did come up, which was the matter of the name of the Carlson Center. I'll just note tonight that no actions were taken, no positions were taken, other than that this is probably something we'll be wanting to talk about, so we might expect to revisit this in January. This is the end of the semester, and it's always really quick before we start thinking about the next semester. So it's going to be a pretty significant semester. Obviously, we have negotiations coming up. It looks, seems like we can get started in maybe February, so that's gearing up rather rapidly. So we will be hitting the ground running first thing in the, beginning of the semester on that, and we're looking forward to some robust, interesting discussions and a good contract. Of course, this is also going to be the semester where we wrap up the HLC accreditation process, so we're looking forward to seeing how that ends. We expect it to end well, and so we're looking forward to that, too. I did want to say something about the budget guidelines. It has been a topic that's come up with faculty on various occasions since the management meeting. I think it's fair to note that a lot of the faculty have some of the same concerns noted by Trustee Cross regarding both male and, particularly the matter of full-time faculty. Concerns about enrollment are duly noted. Clearly, that's something we all have to look at, and it is something that makes it hard to make the case for more full-time faculty if you simply look at the global numbers of enrollment. I would urge that it not get lost in that, that if you drill down and look at individual programs and departments, enrollment is rather more complicated, and some programs have seen a significant increase in enrollment. When that happens and there's not a corresponding increase in full-time faculty in those departments and programs, well, then you have to rely on adjuncts. They do a great job, but that does put pressure on departments in various ways. It's not always easy in some areas to get good adjuncts, and when you do, you're also distorting the full-time, part-time ratio sometimes in some programs to pretty extreme levels. So it was said earlier, this is a document for discussion. The budget process has a long ways to go. I just hope that this is part of that discussion, that we do have a good look, not just at the global enrollment trends, but also some of the more particular issues, because that is one of the things that I hear from faculty about quite frequently. There's a certain frustration that year after year, we have the same number of full-time faculty. I think I'll leave it there. Other than to wish everybody a wonderful holiday and thank you for the good year. Looking forward to another one.
Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. President, Arjo, why are having new full-time faculty so important?
Well, for a lot of reasons. One, as I said, if you have an area in which there's growth in students and you can't keep up with full-time faculty, it does get less stable if you're trying to rely on adjuncts, particularly in those areas where sometimes adjuncts are not easily come by. But full-time faculty are here. They're by job description, expected to be engaged in more than just teaching. They are the ones that sit on committees, bring new curriculum forward, and just kind of drive the academic part of the college, which is kind of the core of it. They bring energy when you get new ones. You have new ideas coming. People who have been here for a long time, we tend to get set in our ways, and we just keep doing what we've been doing. Having somebody come along and bring something else to kind of knock us off our comfort is going to be a good thing. So I think on every level, it's kind of the lifeblood of the institution to have a large cadre of faculty, colleagues, people who are tied with higher ed across multi-levels, going to conferences. It keeps the place vibrant, and so that's why. We have a policy that works, I guess, well enough, but it's kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul. We take faculty from a program that's not seeing growth, kind of move them over to one that is. That puts kind of the hurt on the program that lost the faculty. So that's our concern.
It's a fascinating, complex dilemma that ultimately gets down in large part to budget issues because of the flexibility a community college is supposed to have to be nimble with, and you can do that better with adjuncts, but it's not, it's at a, it's at a cost to full-time faculty, which, which has the, the cost that you just mentioned, not getting the benefits of full-time. So I know it'll be a discussion, and it will, it will never end, it will be a discussion that never ends, and so I think the work is to make the best judgment you can. And although we have no, we have not increased full-time positions, we have moved positions around, trying to fill programs that are growing and, I don't, I don't know how to say this, I might hurt somebody's feelings, more relevant or better, better attractive to students and student outcomes, but it's, it's a never-ending, it's a never-ending battle, and it's, it's good that you brought it up.
Yeah, it is difficult. I mean, just add one more point. When, what we do now does create some tension because people feel like they lost a position to another department, and you stole our position, which is not fair, but that's kind of sometimes the, the underlying sense that how can we have to lose in order for someone else to gain? It doesn't always create the most healthy dynamics.
Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you clarified something that's been bothering me tonight. We've had reference made, we haven't hired any new people. And I think, I think the, we've hired... I thi, I think the, we've hired new people. Uh, your, your point of, we haven't increased, uh, the numbers of faculty to the enrollment. So, there's a difference between hiring new people to replace, uh, and not hiring anybody at all. Um, I, I'm, I'm really looking forward to our discussions, and particularly, uh, on collegial steering, and, uh, because, uh, first of all, academic freedom is one thing I'm very interested in.
We could put that back on the agenda.
We've talked, we've talked about that, Dr. Arjo.
I'd like to talk about academic freedom.
But I, but I think there's, on the enrollment issue, uh, also, um, most organizations like to add components, and, and the effective ones will review those that aren't as, um, productive, or efficient, or timely. I'm not suggesting I have an agenda of what should be reduced, but I think we do have to have the discussion about what is an appropriate number to have a class. And so, I appreciate your comment, trustee Musil, in terms of moving and shifting, uh, positions from department to department, and your point's well-taken. If I'm in Department Ajax and I lose a staff, yeah, you took one from me, and I'm going to get you down the road. So, we're competitive people. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Thank you for your contribution to a good year. Good first semester.
Yeah. First, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next liaison report is from the Johns County Education Research Triangle, Doc, uh, Dr. Lindstrom.
Dr. Lindstrom.
That's French, too, for trustee Lindstrom.
It's Lindstrom.
You're really on a roll tonight.
Forgive me, folks. I have, uh, really a very brief report, just three items. Um, sales tax revenues for the Johns County Education Research Triangle for the month of October were approximately $1.5 million, or 2.5% up from last year. Uh, that's good, certainly good news. Uh, the, the J-Cert Authority last met, as I reported the last meeting, uh, here, uh, was November 6th, and that was at the KU Medical Research Center in Fairway. And our next meeting isn't until May 7th, and that will be at the KU Edwards Center, um, uh, down the street at 12600 South Corvair, and that's at 7:30 in the morning. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Questions about J-Cert? Thank you, David. Trustee Cook? Kansas Association of Community College Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was called to Minnesota to attend the funeral of my mother-in-law during that time, so I was not able to attend, but I will defer to Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, trustee Cook. Um, the, the meeting was held in Arkans, Arkansas City?
Kansas City.
Arkansas City, Cali County. Um, it, well-attended by trustees, uh, across the board. Um, the items, um, for discussion, basically, it was a very good, uh, presentation by Cali County about their new campus that they're building in an adjacent county that's being funded by a sales tax that they, they had. They're projecting, at least on their initial plans, like maybe six or seven buildings. It was very impressive. Um, the, um, Ali Devine gave a presentation, which was basically just a review of the state's budget, uh, which was very interesting. Uh, one thing that, in particular, stood out was the debt load that, um, Kansas, uh, the people of Kansas have per capita versus the surrounding states, maybe three to four times more than those in surrounding states, and, and that was, and that will, that will affect us down, down the road. Um, other than that, it was a, a pretty, a pretty standard, uh, standard KACC meeting.
I would also say that trustee-elect Lawson attended.
Yes.
And there was a new trustee seminar, and so we appreciate you taking the time to, to go to Cali College and, uh, meet your friends in the southeast.
Angelina, did any, trustee-elect Lawson, did anything stand out to you for your first encounter?
Uh, it was really nice. Uh, they talked about the cyber tax that sometimes can happen throughout the state and throughout the country, so that was nice to kind of get some update on those issues that might be coming and down the road. Uh, we learned a little bit about the dark web and kind of understanding about that, which seems Latin to me. Uh, but other, overall, I think it went well.
I look forward to trustee-elect Lawson giving these reports, because she's much more thorough than I was in mine.
That concludes our report.
Oh, yes. Thank God. Uh, no. Trustee Ingram, Foundation report.
I have a short.
We're a little goofy in the last day of the year, the last meeting of the year.
That's all right. That's right. The Foundation is currently accepting nominations for new board members. The Board Development Committee met this week to begin evaluating candidates for the 2018-2019 board slate. This process will conclude with a vote on the slate at the Foundation's April Board Meeting. The Foundation is also currently accepting nominations for the 2018 Johnson County of the Year. The intent of this award is to recognize someone who has made significant contributions to the Johnson County community and the college. Nominations are due to the Foundation by January 15th, and a selection committee will review all submissions. All recommendations can be brought to the Foundation office or emailed directly to Kate Allen. The Foundation would like to close by thanking the trustees for their efforts to make 2017 such a successful year. They give particular well wishes to trustee Sandate and trustee Sharp, who have been wonderful Foundation supporters for many years. The trustee gift this year is handmade pasta, which you all should have at your desk. Um, the handmade pasta was made and produced by our culinary students. This pasta was created with a special machine purchased by the Foundation's Friends with Taste membership revenue. A special recipe from the class is also included. We wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, and thank you from the Foundation.
Thank you. Questions? Not, the next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. The board considers, uh, in the consent agenda, a number of routine and consensus items that are typically considered in one motion and voted on in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the agenda and debated and voted on separately. Are there any items on tonight's consent agenda anyone would like to consider separately? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say yes.
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 Those pose, say no. Motion carries unanimously. We have no executive session, but before, before we adjourn, ask, I ask for a motion for adjournment, I do want to recognize that, um, two trustees, this will be their last meeting, Stephanie Sharp wasn't able to be here tonight, and she mentioned that last month, and we lauded her a little bit there. Uh, we can laud her a little bit here in absentia. Um, but Henry, I want to personally thank you for your time on the board. You stuck your neck out in an interview process that in many ways is harder than an election, uh, because of the quality of the people that, that came forward and wanted to be on this board, and during the time you've been here, you've been a very active and helpful member. I know, based on, I remember your interview for the, for the, for the position, how dedicated you and your family are to education. Um, I know you'll stay, stay active on the Foundation, and hopefully you'll still come back and give us your wisdom, uh, to those of us who, who will be trying to move forward and increase your legacy. Trustee Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Sandate, how long have you been a member of the Foundation Board?
You know, I've, uh, I think I was sort of in my, middle of my, my second term when I was appointed, so I know it's my second term, so I'm thinking about four years, is what I was thinking.
I, I've known you as long as I was a Foundation liaison in 13 and 14, 2013 and 14. That's where I met you.
Right.
Uh, I want to thank you for your service. Uh, I count you as a friend, and, uh, appreciate your commitment to the college. I, I remember, in a very talented, uh, interview process, uh, what stuck out to me was something that hit home for me. Your, your family's commitment, belief in education, uh, and, um, faith, though whatever form it may be, in the education process, and, uh, you were somebody I trusted to take care of this college and do what's in its best interest. So, I thank you for your service. It's been an extreme pleasure and high honor to serve with you, so.
Thank you.
Trustee Ingram, and then trustee Cook.
Um, well, I'm not sure where trustee Cook was going, but I wanted to thank you for your leadership as our chair.
Oh, well, that's going to be later. There's going to be balloons. Where'd the balloons go?
I think Dr. Cook was in charge of the balloons, and they're not here. But anyway, um, in all seriousness, you have been the leader since I was elected two years ago, and one of the most important things that you have shared for me was just talking about this college as the college, and how important it was for us to refer to it as the college, which in my mind reflects the caliber of not only staff and students, and, but also our community that supports us. And, and you've just, I think, driven that up with just those two words, "The college," because even now in conversation, my friends will correct themselves before I even have the opportunity to, when they don't say "the college." My friends now, and so I thank you. I think that was really, you know, you've just done so many wonderful things, and to encourage those of us who come in, like Henry, um, and are new to the board, you've made us feel very welcome and appreciated. So, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Someday, I'll get a parade brigade, and we'll have floats and parades in these communities. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you.
The college is important to all of us.
Your expectations are, are always very high. Let me just, no parade.
They're both casetakers.
That explains it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, well, to build upon what trustee Ingram has said about the college, uh, I, I really want to applaud the board at the time to select, uh, Mr. Sandati. Uh, I still think it should be Henrico Sandati. And when we talk about, uh, the population of the county, uh, we, we, uh, took the opportunity to bring Henrika on. I, I believe, Henry, that, uh, if I'm correct, this is the first, um, person of diversity. I like, I'd rather call it person of unity. I, I think nationally, we, we've overplayed the diverse, diversification card too much, and we ought to be focusing on unity. So, I, I really appreciate, uh, the message, the voice you've brought for, um, the people of the county for the college, and, uh, we're going to remain in contact. I'm going to rely upon your insight, um, and, uh, like, like trustee Cross and trustee Musil, uh, it, it takes courage, I think, to say, "Hey, I'd like to be considered in an interview process," when we had a really strong slate of candidates, uh, at that time to come to the board. So, thank you is not enough, uh, but thank you very much for your insights and your, your, um, representation and your vision, uh, of all the people of the county. Thank you.
David, I cut you off. I'm sorry.
No, no, not at all. Uh, I also, uh, you know, I've had the privilege of sitting next to you, Henry, uh, for the last two years, and, uh, I want to thank you for your friendship. It's been an honor and a privilege to sit next to you, and, um, uh, I want to thank you for your friendship. I want to thank you for your commitment to the college, and most importantly, and trustee Musil mentioned, touched on this, I want to thank you for your willingness to put yourself forward for public service, uh, as, as you have here in Johns County. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and somebody said, "Thank you isn't enough," and there will be cake afterwards. There's a beautiful cake back here that I assume was baked here on campus. Uh, yes. So, don't, don't run off after the adjournment. Um, stick around and say, "Thank you" in person to Henry, and have a piece of cake with us. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Thank you. Everybody have a happy holiday. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.